We don't have any makeup again, you know. God almighty. I don't know who's producing this event.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the second part of our scheduled meeting. We -- I will pledge allegiance again. Can we --
No, we're just --
We have extra people here, so we can make them present.
Sure.
Pledge allegiance?
To the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands on the nation and God invisible, with the great justice for all.
Yeah, so you may want to mention school committee meeting in this office.
School committee meeting. Mention the meeting.
Oh, yeah, okay. So, we did have a joint school committee meeting with the selectmen, and we appointed, along unanimously with the school committee, Lauren Sherlock as a new school committee member, and we're very happy and very pleased about that. She's going to do a great job for the town, and I've got to say the school is doing an unbelievable job. The school committee has worked very well together. They've got two great guys over there. They have a great bunch of teachers, and I've never seen the school so -- in such better shape in my entire life, except for when T was there.
Thank you.
Okay, so, opening comments. Mr. Lombard.
Good evening. I want to send a special thank you to Jen McCarthy for raising the money for the fireworks. I heard even she had a surplus this year, which is huge. I mean, for her standing out there at Dunkin' Donuts at 5:30 in the morning selling T-shirts, it's quite an accomplishment, and she did a great job. I also want to thank Britt Rosie, the chairman of the Fourth of July Committee, and her team. They did a wonderful job with the Horribles Parade and Plus to Races, and they should be commended. And thirdly, I'd like to thank Pat McGodle and the Savage -- Savage, and there was a third one, and I forgot the name. God almighty, who was the third one on the IT team?
Oh, Lana? Lana, I can't remember.
Lana Warman.
Lana Warman, yes.
Yeah. They did a great job. They finished that complete package, and they have on the computers every billing permit and associated with that permit from 1960 going forward. And they did a fantastic job. I've seen the actual written report. I picked a random billing permit, and it just -- the computer come right up with it. Any Board of Appeals decision that attached those billing permits are also built into that. So, it's a 1960 to, I think it was to this July 1st, 2017. Every one of those permits have been on that team, and they did a fantastic job. And I also want to thank the Police Department and the Fire Department during the time of the Fourth of July, as well as the Public Works for putting out all the signs, and I don't think we had one incident during the Fourth of July. And it was great, great teamwork, and they should be applauded. In fact, Mr. Chairman, I move that we write thank you letters to those individuals. The Fourth of July Chairman, Britt, what's her name?
Jen McCarthy.
Jen McCarthy, thank you note for her, and then to the IT, three individuals that finished the IT grant. And that's all set in every one of the permits, so that was huge, as well as the Police Department Chief, Fire Chief, and the Public Works Superintendent, the three individual letters. So, they did a great job because, you know, the only comment I have, and I'll bring it up, it's on the agenda, the American flags that usually we put up for Memorial Day. I don't know why they were not for the Fourth of July, but someone said, you know, we've never put them up for the Fourth, but I'm going to move tonight that we make sure we brought all these flags and the post holders, and we should have them for those two days. Now, that comes up on the agenda.
Yep, absolutely.
And that's all my opening comment, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so you made that motion about the letters, and I'll second that. In favor? Are you in favor of sending our letter to all those board members? So, aye. Motion carries. Okay, Mr. Taylor.
Opening comments. There are a lot more people than just those people that did a great job over the Fourth. The people who organized the Horribles Parade, I went down there, joined the Horribles Parade. No, I went down to watch it. It was really fun. The fireworks were awesome. Jen, Britt, there was a road race. If we could recognize the Dorans and the Waltons, they ran the road while they organized the road race. I thought everything went very well. My one comment was that the lights were on at the basketball courts again, and people were coming up to me saying, "Why are the lights on when the fireworks are going off?" And I went, "I don't know." So, next year, maybe we can make sure those lights are off.
Dennis and I talked about that.
Thank you.
Okay, and I would also like to thank Jen and Britt and the whole team that put together the fireworks, the road race, the, you know, the Horribles Parade, that was pretty funny, and all the races that go on every year. It's, you know, it's all volunteer, and, you know, these people deserve a lot of credit for doing it. And I'd also like to thank the police because, and the fire, and the DPW, they do a great job, and especially the police, because I noticed that they had a -- there was a presence down Short Beach on the Fourth of July. They came down there, they walked around, they made sure that there was no alcohol, and I witnessed it, I watched it. I actually went to the beach a couple of times, and I was there the other day, and we're going to talk about that a little later on. And the Fire Department, they're always doing great stuff, so, again, it turned out very well, so, I thank you. Okay, and that's it. Now, we're going to move on to approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion?
I'm to take a motion to approve the minutes of May 4th, May 18th, June 21st, and release the executive session minutes of March 2nd, '17, and March 9th. I so moved that, Mr. Chairman.
A little second?
Second.
Okay, for discussion, 5:18, '17 minutes, the first portion of that meeting should be stricken. I make the motion that we strike those minutes, that portion of the minutes, the meeting that was downstairs from 6:30 to 7:30.
Second.
Okay, so, all those in favor of striking the minutes from that portion?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, why are we striking that portion?
Well, I don't believe they're right, so.
Okay. That was what, May?
18th.
May 18th?
But you're not talking about the executive session meeting minutes?
No.
Oh, okay. Those continue stay.
Then we went on to the regular scheduled meeting afterwards.
Yeah, 6:30, yeah, okay.
May 18th, huh?
So, we're accepting everything except for the
Right.
First part, the 6 o'clock meeting on the 18th.
All right. I have no problem with that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All those in favor of accepting the rest of the minutes and releasing the minutes of executive session minutes of 5:18, 6:21, and the executive session minutes of 3:02 and 3:09? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. Okay, this is the portion of the meeting where we have the citizens forum. No one wants to get up and speak, huh? Okay. All right. Now, we're going to get into the next portion of it, and that's the grant awards for the Fire Department.
Can we move that back a little? There was a call that the chief had to run out to, so if we can give him a few more minutes, that'd be great. Thank you.
All right, we'll go to the Town Administrator's Report.
Okay, excellent. We have here tonight some representatives of the state organization, and Rob Thibault, they're here to look at a camera operation. Rob, if you want to just pop up and give us a quick overview?
Thank you. This is part of a grant. The town has the opportunity to benefit from it. It was a grant applied for by the Harbor Masters, Massachusetts Harbor Masters Association, and it's a part of the Homeland Security FEMA, and it's heavily sponsored by the Coast Guard. And what is being done is creating a network of cameras that watch our coastline from the New Hampshire border all the way down to Plymouth, is it? Yeah, yeah. And so, Nahant is -- has a long history of being a point of observation for Boston Harbor, and that is a big factor here also. We sit out in the water here in a location where we can look in many different directions depending on how these cameras are set up. We could have, I think the original base is four cameras, and that number may be increased to as many as six, depending on how everything unfolds here, approvals and everything. Basically, what we have, what we would have as a fundamental network would be what they call PTZ cameras. We'll have three pan tilt zoom cameras mounted in various locations around the town that would look out onto the waterways and give us the opportunity to monitor what's boaters. If there's an emergency, these cameras can zoom in and give us a location for first responders to get out there and, you know, act much more quickly as far as any victims. The -- there will be an additional camera, a thermal imaging camera, that would probably be mounted down the wharf, which would give us the ability to look out over the boats at night if there were -- and we haven't had a problem for a few years now, but we've had problems in the past where people would come in and break into the boats. So, this would give us an opportunity to potentially see and alert first responders again to address that issue. So, in just preparation for this, John, and I'm sorry, Eric, yes, I'm sorry, we had met better part of a year ago, I think, yeah, to discuss initial interest on this, and we thought it was a great idea. I talked to Chief Dwyer, and he's very interested in it. Part of the program would include a computer that would -- and monitor that would, you know, be capturing all of this image and allow the ability to look through cameras individually and manipulate those cameras individually based on this workstation. The workstation would be based up at the police station. They would have custody of that. It also includes the ability to, through a special application, say, "I could also access that camera network through my cellphone in order to take a look around town and see what boaters are doing." Now, it's not just Nahant that is obviously impacted by this opportunity. If we have a situation, say, out around Egg Rock, we can look through our cameras out towards Egg Rock. If we want to look further, we can log into Swampscot's cameras and look out at Egg Rock. If we've got a situation on the other side, we're looking over Revere, we can access our cameras on that side of town, look at what's going on in Harbor. If we can't see far enough, we can log into Revere's cameras or Lynn Harbor's cameras and look through theirs to see what's going on. So, this is just an introduction to the program. What we need is to know if the selectmen are in support of this, and if so, then we'll continue on with the program.
John would like to have a few questions also?
Sure. He stepped to the microphone.
My name is John Grenon. I'm with Lantel Communications in Norwood, Massachusetts, and my colleague is Eric Johnson, also with Lantel Communications. We are the vendor of record for this project, and I just want to give you a very quick history. As far as Lantel is concerned, we are a local IBW 103 Union Electrical Company, but we manage the Homeland Security Systems for the City of Boston and the Homeland Security District that surrounds it. That also includes the U.S. Coast Guard. For this project that we've been selected for, this is a port security grant that was applied for in 2015 by the Massachusetts Harbor Masters Association, which is a 501(c)(6) organization. They received $1 million from FEMA on this project, and they have a pending request for an additional million. Commonwealth of Massachusetts matched a $330,000 in-kind funding to this project on June 26th of last year, and that second match is in process right now. So, where we're at with this project, Phase 1 on that first 1 million has been approved, and that is for the creation of a point-to-point wireless antenna system from the moulth of the Merrimack River, which borders Newburyport and Salisbury, to the moulth of the Cape Cod Canal where Plymouth borders Barnstable County. So, a picture and imaginary line connecting 16 antennas up and down the coast of Massachusetts. And then, in each community, there is a workstation that the Harbor Master explains in a series of cameras. The locations of the cameras will be determined by the community that is deploying them in the Harbor Master. The type of camera will be determined by the Harbor Master that is best suited for that environment, and the type and position of camera when it comes to a thermal, either on the bow of his boat or on a mooring field or an area of past problems, is determined by the community. Recorded video is being held for 30 days. After that, it will be looped over at the Secretary of State's current recommendations for law enforcement and public safety cameras, and the only municipality or the only entity that will have access to the cameras in Nahant, Massachusetts, is the Nahant Harbor Master. So, if there was an emergency in Nahant, and he wanted to look at the Swampscot cameras, or if there was a search and rescue operation, then Nahant, Revere, Winthrop, Swampscot, maybe Lynn would all have access to the same live feeds simultaneously. But if there was a reported theft, say, yesterday in your community, the only person that would have access to go back into that recorded video would be the Harbor Master, not another municipality. So, that's kind of how the system is structured. Eric is the project manager for this. He currently manages about 2,000 cameras in Boston. He comes out of the federal Homeland Security space. I was 20 years with the Sheriff's Department in Boston, retired, and I'm the Director of Business Development for this company, and we're here tonight. It's really a great position for us to be in. It's not a sales call. This project's been awarded. The monies have already been conveyed. We're currently operating this system in 16 communities as of today. Neighbors in Winthrop and Revere are currently operational. The back hall network is currently in Swampscot, and we've had conversations with the Harbor Master over there, Sergeant Waters, about that. That's very close. So, we're just here to brief you on the project and answer any questions that you have for -- I know the police chief has arrived. So, Fourth Amendment sensibilities for these cameras. These cameras only look at the maritime space. There are no public ways. There are no walkways, no private property, no vehicles. They only look at water. That's it. It is a paid-for project by FEMA. It is not a Homeland Security project. It is not a law enforcement project. It is for maritime security, and in a community like Nahant with police, fire, EMS, and the, you know, the ocean rescue team they have, it really does add a capability in Nahant that we think would be helpful, especially in life-saving and on the law enforcement side for solvability factors for past crimes. I could talk all night. I won't, so if you have questions -- I'm getting the nod. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Gentlemen?
I think it's terrific.
If I can add one more thing, we specked out 15 locations in the community. We talked briefly about that. The locations were submitted to FEMA for EHP, which is Environmental, Historical, and Preservation Review. All of the locations in town that have been specked out have been light poles on the water, looking out at only the water, and they passed EHP reviews. The only internal camera, excuse me, internal equipment component location was for an antenna placement at the highest point in your community, which appears to be your radio tower that would allow us to connect Winthrop out towards Lynn and bring the network this way. That's the last thing I wanted to mention.
Okay. Richie?
Yeah, I -- has any of the communities, have you come across, are the communities holding public hearings on this thing?
We have. So, we've had a variety. So, recently, I was in Manchester by the Sea. They had a 5 to 0 vote by the Board of Selectmen to approve it, but they did have a public hearing. There was no opposition. We have been in hearings in a variety of salt shore communities. There's been no opposition, but I have to tell you, there was some opposition in Essex, Massachusetts. We had a hearing. Police Chief Peter Silver is the Harbor Master of record there, and there were a lot of questions and there were a lot of concerns about the usage of the camera, not so much the placement, but the usage. They're also a community that does not have any cameras at this time, so we find that the further north and south we go from Boston, we find communities that don't have this type of technology, and it's a bigger shock. So, the verdict is still out in Essex. There were a lot of questions. We had a nice meeting. We were there for a couple of hours, but all of the other communities have signed on board, so right now, out of 32, we have 31 that we believe are indicating a positive at this time.
Do we have to give you an answer tonight?
No, absolutely not. And like we had spoke about earlier off the record, we have, I've specked out locations all over Nahant in cooperation with your Harbor Master, who's been fantastic, but we would want your Harbor Master to have a conversation with the Police Department and the Fire Department to get the biggest bang for the buck for this equipment as far as operational needs. So, I would appreciate not getting an answer tonight, and then a secondary meeting in Nahant where we could talk to the public safety folks and Harbor Master Thibault to decide best practices moving forward.
Well, he's the man.
I would agree.
He does a great job as the Harbor Master, so he'd be in conjunction with the police chief. Do we need training for the officers that are watching this video?
So, two things on that. Working with police and fire in the community, that comes from Harbor Master Thibault, which is great. We've been working with him now for a year and a half on this in discussions because the project has not gone operational, and he suggested that we come before you to have this discussion, which is great. As far as Harbor Masters go, in some communities, they are the police chief; in some communities, they are a third party, and in some communities, they actually have a Harbor Master office. So, I think you're very lucky, and you know that, to have Rob here. He's very proactive. Moving forward on this, as far as training is concerned, once the system is operational and placed, then a training class would be conducted for two things, proper operation of the system and the retrieval of video. We wouldn't want somebody to make a mistake pulling that video off. But again, I've never been on a Nahant police station, so I don't know what their VMS platform is, so.
Well, he's going to tell you, we're going to need a new station.
All right. So, we would make sure
Put that video in, he's going to -- I think it's a great idea. I think it's fantastic. We just bought a drone, too, you know? So, the drone, I don't know if we're going to use a drone, or we have cameras now, so. Oh, that's a little dig for you, chief. I just give you a little, you know.
It'll be a nice supplement.
Nothing serious, chief.
We can talk after the meeting about that.
That's a private joke.
Sure.
Anyways, I think it's a great idea. So, you're going to have cameras covering Lynn Harbor?
So, we'll have cameras from, I would say, from Winthrop, Revere, Swampscot, Nahant, and Lynn
Okay.
That actually look at other municipalities in shared shipping areas.
Sure, okay.
Where's the placement of our cameras going to be?
We have 14 sites that we've submitted, 15 if you include the police station antenna. We've submitted 15 sites for approval, and I can send an email to the Board to share those locations with you. They were picked on availability of power, availability of light poles, the lack of intrusion from residential, you know, creep, and the best water views of what we thought we were looking at. However, I'm not, I say this with all due respect, I'm not a maritime guy, so.
The antenna would be best placed at top of Bailey's Hill, which is right on the water.
Again, we come into a community, and normally what we think for antenna placement is not what actually is the best practice, and usually your police and fire chief know what the best practice is because they have radios, so.
Well, I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
I do, so, and when do you expect to have, when would you like us to have the hearing?
Well, some
We don't need a hearing.
No, I know that, but I mean
I just ask them. I want to make sure that, you know, we don't need to really have a hearing.
Most communities have not. We've been to, we've been to several, we've briefed a lot of boards of selectmen and town managers and town administrators. We've briefed two city councils on it. We've done an executive session for the city councils because they don't want their security procedures out to the public, which is somewhat understandable, especially in the Police Department as a camera system. When do I need to hear from you? We're installing, we've installed Winthrop and Revere, and they are active. If you told me in the next two weeks that it was approved here, then we would come and sit with your police, fire chiefs, and your Harbor Masters, confirm the locations, install, and move to the next community.
All right.
One of the things, the minute we install here, which is, we just did Rockport, day before yesterday, I believe, so Rockport's kind of standalone right now because they, Rockport has cameras, but they're not connected to anything. The nice thing here in Nahant, because of where you're located, when we turn Nahant on, then your public safety folks in Nahant would have access immediately to Boston, Quincy, Revere, Winthrop, Nahant, and the United States Coast Guard system. So, for solvability factors, I think it would assist law enforcement, and for search and rescue functions, it would certainly give your fire chief and your Harbor Master a lot more operational awareness.
Both chiefs are in favor of this?
Yes, we did have a conversation throughout this part of the security management, and we said we're in the process, but we haven't sat down yet.
You know it's going to be placed up there in your station? Excuse me?
We'll have to discuss that, and I don't exactly know what we're going to go with the equipment, just like you said.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, we just, we just give approval now, and I do think we have a
We'll work out the logistics.
I do think you have a, that we put on a public hearing on it, so people can come up and talk, but as far as, we just give the okay to go ahead.
Yeah.
I mean, we don't have to know where all the cameras are.
I'd like to know where they're going to place them. That would be, you know, that would be nice. And I want to thank Rob. You brought this in, am I right?
Yeah, I was talking to you. It's kind of a good topic about the Massachusetts District.
I want to thank you for that, Robbie. You did it. That's a great, this is, I think it's great, and
What do we just vote on right now tonight?
We can, we can
Do you recommend that everyone in town knows where the cameras are, where these are?
Well, I'd ask a few questions on that. Are there currently street cameras in the community? No. So, as much as I'd like to get an approval, install, and move on to the next community, I think that somebody in this community may see a camera on a pole and have questions for you, and you getting those questions
We should know.
I mean, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So, I'll say two things to that. I would have no problems coming back to another meeting and discussing it. If there was an open forum, I'd be fine, but we will stay here all day. If you have anybody in town, any of your shareholders or stakeholders in town that have a concern about this, that raise that concern, we'll come and have a cup of coffee with them and explain it.
Long as they know that they're not intrusive
Yes.
That the cameras are pointed out at the ocean, not in their windows.
Correct.
And that's, I mean, that's what I think everybody's concern would be, you know.
It is. When we install cameras at 3 o'clock in the morning, we don't talk to the neighbors about it, but these cameras would be installed with the police, fire chief, Harbor Master knowing about it at 10 o'clock in the morning, and if a community member had an issue with it, then we would stick around and show the community member on an iPad what it was looking at. It's a, this is a, it's not a Homeland Security system, and I can't say that enough, that Homeland Security kind of gets a rap.
Right.
It's not, it's not, we're not looking to catch bad guys here. We're looking to create a safer water environment around Nahant.
What it can do is, I can pass back the information to you about the locations, and then we can chat about whether we want to go forward with any further meetings.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, I'm ready to go forward with it, but if that's, if you want to know what the cameras are going to be, that's, we can wait.
And one of the things
I don't think it's a big thing. I think we should vote tonight.
You want to vote?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody want to?
I'll make a motion. We approve the request of the Harbor Master, Police Chief, Fire Chief on the new Massachusetts camera project, MCCP, as presented tonight going forward.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Any more discussion on it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, so.
So, I'd like to, just on the record, say this, if it's possible, that we will request from Harbor Master Thibault, at his earliest convenience, that he sets up meetings with the
Yes.
Public safety folks in the community.
Yep.
Do you understand the chief's concern about interference with the antennas, and we'll make sure that doesn't happen?
We'll draft a letter tonight
Right.
With the vote. The Town Administrator approving this request, so you have a copy for your files, along with Robbie, and the other two, the Fire Chief and Police Chief as well. fire chief and police chief as well, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, nice job, thanks for coming.
Thanks, Rob.
Thanks, Rob. So we now have the chief back, Mike Feinberg, so if we can move back to the grant item, and Mike, if you could kinda walk us through the grants.
Good evening, tonight I'm very pleased to announce that over the past couple of weeks, we've been notified of two federal grants that the Nahant Fire Department will be receiving through the Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program through FEMA. The first grant, the total is fifty-three thousand dollars, it's to replace our breathing air compressor that we have in our station, the one that we have there is over thirty years old, and is sorely in need of replacement, that's the system that we use to fill our SCBA bottles that we use to go into the buildings. The second grant, a little bit more substantial, is for a new fire engine, I know that we've had a lot of discussions during my tenure here over the past year and a half about a new, new engine, it was on my five-year plan for next fiscal year, but we have been awarded four-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars total, and I believe Jeff's already given you the breakdown of the federal and local share on that, we have a five percent share of each of those, four-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars total for a new engine that we're gonna be moving forward with.
Okay, thank you.
With that, I'd like to give due credit to firefighter Austin Antrim, he's our grant writer, and obviously in the past has been very successful, and can, obviously continues to be so, so I asked Austin to be here tonight to speak with you and say thank you.
Thank you, I think that's great, I mean, that's, it's a half, over half a million dollars, and I do wanna thank Austin, I mean, I think the town's indebted to him, this is not the first engine he's got, I think Austin, if you tallied them all up in grants, it's probably a couple million dollars that he's, that he's secured for the town, between hose, a ladder truck, a pump truck, he's got the magical hand, I think, when it comes to grant writing, when it comes to that, we are deeply indebted to this, to him, for this, I know I am, he does a great job, he's eloquent with his wording, he just knows what to do, and I really, I don't know what to say to him, thank you.
Same here, thank you. Richie? Yeah, Josh, you know, throw two million dollars in grants and give it to the town is unbelievable, your initiative and your dedication to Nahant and the fight upon it is just outstanding, I wish we could give you something, make a, you know, I don't wanna give you a gold sticker because we gotta, I think I'm gonna have to introduce a silver sticker or something else to come up with something else for you, but you deserve something, and I've been thinking, ever since I heard about the grant and what you did, I've been thinking about it really seriously, for you and your wife to take you to somewhere, you know, I just, I'm working on it, okay, I'm having trouble with the other two selectmen coming up for the funding, but, but you deserve all the credit, you deserve just so much more, you know, for you to, as a fireman, your initiative, and your steadfast, and your just, your dedication to the town of Nahant and then to the fight upon it, the combination of both is outstanding, and I really mean that, I mean that with a, you know, I just, I've been here a long time and I've never seen it, okay, I've seen, you know, Mark Holland run a few grants and get a few money, but you coming out of the ranks, rank and file, the fight upon it, is huge, I just, and I'm gonna be thinking the next month, I'm gonna, people are gonna send in suggestions and ideas, probably tonight, I'm gonna get back on my, my computer, but you deserve something, I don't know what it's gonna be, but I'll tell ya, it's just, it's just not gonna be a beach sticker, you know what I mean, a gold one, you know what I mean, I have to come up with some, wow, you know what I mean, alright? Congratulations, and I really mean that, on behalf of the board, the board's very, I've never seen them so excited, two of these guys, and they very seldom get excited, but Dee got excited about this grant for you.
We'll give you the old engine. Great job, Austin, really, you have no idea how, what this means to us.
Thank you. Moving along, next item is short beach, dune grass, just update.
I don't think we have anybody here, is she gonna come, Diana?
No, no, she wasn't gonna come, I'm just gonna give you a quick overview so you understand what's happening, so we've been looking at the dune grass planting program that occurred quite a few years ago here, and the quality of the plant material, and we've done some testing, and we find that there's some sections of the dune grass that are nothing but weeds, there, the majority of these sections of the dune are vibrant, diverse plant cultures, so what we're doing is, we're, I've provided you a plan and a map that shows where we will strip out this fall, some of the most infested areas of weeds, and replant those in the appropriate manner, as you all understand that when we planted this the first time, we used compost from the compost center, and that then created a plethora of weeds, so this round, what we'll do is, in the areas we strip it out, we're going to use sand and plant it appropriately with the dune grass, the other areas we're going to manage, if you've been watching over the last two, three weeks, the DPW has been working from Little Nahant to the lifesaving station, and they've done an excellent job, they've been also working with the neighbors to kind of deal with some of the concerns that the neighbors have about the appearance of the dune grass, they've now shifted to the Irish Town side, and they're working on the Irish Town side, and will then work to the middle and continue to manage the health of the dunes, so that by this fall, when, when that's the plant, proper planting season for dune grass, this fall, we'll go ahead and strip out the weeded areas, replant them, and then we're gonna work within the existing budget that we have left, so the CPC had provided us funding, that we only used approximately fifty thousand of the funding, and they gave us about sixty thousand, so we have some monies left over in that account, and what we'll do is, we will try to replant using just those funds, but you see a lot of activity down there now, that activity is meant to manage the situation until this fall, and then we'll do the strip in, strip out of the weeds and do the replanting, and then next year we'll come back and we'll continue to do more management, but it's really acknowledging the fact that there's a very vibrant plant culture down there, so that's just an update.
Okay, the only problem I have with this is, I sat on the Conservation Commission for twenty years, and I can tell you, it needs to be permitted, what you're doing down there, and you gotta stop the neighbors from down the other end, from Little Nahant, from tearing up, mowing it and tearing it up, it's a protected dune, I would permit this before you do any more work down there, and do it the right way with the Conservation Commission, and possibly get some ideas before we start, before we spend any more money on it, because we've already spent quite a bit of money on it, and I really don't wanna make any more mistakes on it.
How much money we spent?
We spent about fifty thousand dollars to get to this point.
Fifty thousand dollars?
Yeah, that was the initial planting, when it went from...
No, 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 I don't wanna know initial planting, I wanna know what we spent since May of this year.
Since May of this year, we probably spent, I'd say, maybe seven hundred dollars.
Who's the woman that picks the weeds?
Diana Brandy.
She got a contract with us?
She does have a contract with us, and what she is going to do is, we're gonna pay her for three sweeps.
How much money does she make?
She will make a thousand dollars per sweep, and so each sweep allows her to go from end to end and manage the vegetation.
It's the worst waste of money and waste of time I've ever seen, let me tell ya, Jeff, you used the loom that was absolutely in the dump, it should've made, you know, I remember Mike Manning telling you not to use that on those, on the seaweed grass.
Yeah, yeah.
And, no, you, don't listen, you didn't listen.
Well, this was installed before I got here, so I do understand that...
No, 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 you've been here, you've been here when that went in, and then to add injury to, you know, you've gotta tear up all that whole, it's all, it's all crabgrass, and they're cutting down, they're wasting their time cutting down the tops of the crabgrass, it might look good, but it's just a waste of time and money, I mean, you need to dig that all up, get the machines down here, get all that, rip it all up, and start a nerve, that's what you need to do.
So just to correct the record, the installation occurred when Mark was here, Mark Holland was here, and I understand that they used the wrong soils, I've been working with the Conservation Commission to understand what they would prefer, and this is their preference, I'm scheduling a meeting to sit with them to go through this.
Well, I talked to Kristen, I think, I think you need to, we should permit it first, permit it through the Conservation Commission, you can still, I'm not sure if the order of conditions is still valid from when it first started, but the stuff that Mark had planted back on the, in the middle of the Middle Bay there, is fine, there's some weeds in there, but you can see the American beach grass, and you're gonna have to have some other plantings in there with it, in order for it to thrive, but the stuff down there on Spring Road, at the end of Spring Road, is just...
Yeah, that's gone.
It's all this, it really has to come up, I would get the opinion from a wetland scientist, Kristen should be able to figure that out.
Yeah, and Kristen's been advising us, we also have spoken with Ellen Steves and Kristen Kent about the need...
That's who I'm talking about, right?
Yeah, the need to actually permit this, and they said we don't need to permit this.
Invite them to the meeting, I like to hear what they're saying, getting two mixed messages here, one from you and one from them, and I really don't like what I'm hearing, and I tell you, that's all crabgrass on there, mixed in with the, you know, and it's just, you know, it's just crazy.
Would it be advantageous to meet out on site, 'cause I think to see it is really...
I don't, I go by it every day, two times a day, three times a day.
I have an idea.
I just think it's, I think it's a waste of time, I just think you're a waste of money, a waste of time, you've gotta tear that all up, start branding.
We have, we're having a problem up at East Point.
At which?
Permitting the...
Yes, the forty steps, yes.
So it's no secret that we need to do that reventment up there, I actually talked to Leslie, I was talking to Leslie Fields today from Woods Hole Group about some FEMA stuff that, you know, for the maps, where people have been asking me, and I mentioned it to her, and she wrote back to me, and she said that she would be more than happy, her company would be happy to come out and look over, it's about sixteen hundred bucks for them to come out, sixteen hundred dollars, which I think we can...
To look at forty steps, or...
Look at forty steps, and he's a coastal engineer, so isn't Dan Cofflin, he's a PE, I talked to the woman from, from the DEP today, and they have dug their heels in on that, pretty much dug her heels in, but I think that if someone like Woods Hole Group looks at this, and it doesn't have to be bid, because it's only sixteen hundred dollars, we can have them come out, they've done, they did a great job for us on the other FEMA stuff, and they went over and above, they can also look at that, and maybe we can get an idea from them what we should do there, but I don't, I think we should not touch it until, and we should permit it, and you do have to permit, when you're fooling around with it doing, you have to, you have to permit it.
Yeah, let me have Kristen, Ellen, and Diana come into our next meeting and chat about this, because I think that the Conservation Commission has been reviewing and discussing this with us, and they're very comfortable with it, but I think that's a good idea to actually pull in Leslie, just to see what Leslie...
Alright, and as far as, I would put the motion forward right now, I'll entertain a motion that we bring Woods Hole Group in to look at the forty step reventment and fund it, sixteen hundred dollars, at least have them come out and look at it, I have the letter here, the email, did you, did you get the email?
I did get the email, so...
From Dan Cofflin, but this is a different email from Leslie?
I didn't, I didn't get that, but...
I'll give you hers at the, at the end of the meeting, and have them look at the forty step reventment, we need to get that done, it's gotta get done, right?
I'll second the motion, okay, discussion.
It has to be done before we run out of money.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, so we'll get Leslie out here?
Yeah, let me talk to Leslie tomorrow and see what we can do for a timing, but, okay, great, and then at the next meeting, we'll have representatives of the cons comm and Diana here to talk about the dunes. Next item has to do with the sewer emergency update, Dennis Wall, the DPW director's on vacation this week, but what he's provided us is information that you have in a priority chart, and then the financials associated with the emergency, what the chart attempts to do is identify the priorities of Dennis and the committee, this is something that Dan Cofflin has worked on with them to call out each of these items, you'll have two charts there, the first one has yellow delineations on some of the projects, and those are really the kind of priority projects, and if you go back to the finances, which is the third page, you'll see that when you run the numbers, we have about two-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars that is available to us, that was not spent to pay for the services that we moved through in the three emergencies, so if you go back to that first spreadsheet, the spreadsheet identifies in the final right-hand column, total costs, that the second item down, which is the yellow item, it says a hundred-and-sixty-one thousand, five hundred dollars, if you were to add up the sum total of these yellow highlighted actions, that's what it would cost to take care of those issues, so what Dennis will do is come to our next meeting and talk about each of these, and kinda walk through his timing on each of these elements, so this is really just to give you an update on what he and the committee have been doing, and that just to let you know he'll be at our next meeting.
Question?
Yes.
I'd like to see a priority put here for the Fox Hill Road, Ward Road, Castle Road, if it's not there, I know we did the dredging, and that was an important step, but every time I go down Fox Hill Road, after a rainstorm, there are huge puddles, and it's just a rainstorm, so I mean, I'd like to see that, I don't know if it can be moved up or...
What that would be is, if you look at, again, the two-hundred-and-thirty-three that's left over, if we were to use the one-sixty-one for these items, then the remainder would be used to fund that, so it's, it's something that is on his priority list, and he plans on doing within the month, this month, so with the next three to four weeks.
Oh, terrific. The one-sixty-one, that was, okay, this is, the drainage on Fox Hill Road, the DPW's gonna do it, correct?
Correct, correct.
Alright, I don't think that, I mean...
Yeah, it doesn't fall...
I think they should get on that right away, get a couple of guys there that, just get them down there with the backhoe and dig up the street and find out, you know, get dig safe down there, and just get it done, because they've been waiting a long time.
As I said, in the next three to four weeks, Dennis plans on having that done, so it is an internal...
I'm gonna keep an eye on it.
Okay, alright.
Oh, I will.
Dee will. So we'll see Dennis at our, we'll see Dennis at our next meeting, any questions on that? If not, we have...
You need to set this up, and for the special town meeting that we're gonna reschedule, this has to be set up, you're talking about, you spent on three breaks, correct, three breaks?
Correct.
You spent how much?
Three.
Me and three?
Yep, a million and three, four eight.
You're gonna need, you're gonna need a couple million dollars to get this system in shape.
So if you look at that first sheet...
No, I don't wanna look at the sheet, I'm just trying to tell you, as town administrator, the town superintendent of Public Works, you need to get this under control, get the funding for this money, before we have another, another break on the Linway, okay, have you, you sent the cameras out yet?
No, they haven't sent the cameras out, so they're just, they're organizing themselves for that.
Well, we're gonna wait until when, we're gonna wait until what, the cold weather comes?
The difficulty with...
I saw that break down there in the Linway, and let me tell ya, it crosses over right where you, your break happened...
It does, yes.
To the outbound lane, to shut that outbound lane down, the traffic's gonna have to go up Market Street, these people, I mean, it's gonna be a nightmare, you know, you, we've gotta prevent that, we don't have enough police officers in the overtime to take care of that, just that alone.
Agreed.
But you're sitting on it, and I'll be honest with you, even if you have a special town meeting just for this, this two million dollars that you need, you need to do it right away.
Yes.
And, you know, is it Dan Cofflin, who's your engineer?
Dan Cofflin, correct.
What about the other two engineers, you've got two other engineers too, don't you, two other consultants?
Dan is our sewer, and Weston and Simpson is our sewer.
We've got more consultants, I don't know who's doing what, but I'll tell ya, you better get everybody attrition high gear, because this thing, you know it's gonna break again, you know it's coming, and that book we read, Frank McGodda said, "It's gonna happen," it's not gonna happen, you know, in three years or four years, it's gonna happen this year, and we had a nightmare on the Linway, I really don't wanna go through it again, the state police, and Lynn, and your town, I mean, you're just, we need to get that either relined or a new pipe inside that, okay?
Correct, we are now having conversations with Swamp Scott and Lynn about doing a bypass, and the bypass will allow us to look at those, the problem with cammering the forest mains is you have to have them clean and dry, so you have to shut them down, that's, that's a huge issue, so the conversations are going well, the... Uh, so, the conversations are going well. The preliminary discussions with Swamp Scott about doing a bypass.
Where is the Swamp Scott main coming across?
It's, it's right on the, uh, Lynn Shore Drive, and we're going to try to tie in with that.
Yep.
Because I'm on that committee. We're going to try to tie in with them. It'd actually be pretty good for them too, in case something happens with theirs, so...
Well, and vice versa.
Right.
We should tie in for the temporary, if you dry it out.
And we need to tie in...
Wash it down, and then put the cameras in there.
We also need to tie in our water main.
Yep.
With Lynn. Because if M W R A shuts down, or something happens to them, then we're in trouble. And we can do that down on, uh, I think it's Pleasant Street and Lynn.
Yeah, there are three or four locations along the entire, um, force main run where we can actually...
We've got three consultants working for the public work, correct?
We have two consultants.
Wait a minute.
Weston Sampson and Dan Cofflin.
That's it. Weston and Sampson is, is, uh, they're the ones that do the actual water and sewer, the sewer, and I would, I would keep an eye on them.
Oh, yeah, no.
Well, I tell you, you know...
But, uh, that's the big, biggest challenge. So, we're now in discussions, um, regarding that bypass option.
This two million dollars is going to turn into six million dollars if, if you're not careful, and, you know, and you get preventive maintenance, you know?
Yep.
And this is serious. This is, we know, we know it's going to happen. And we're sitting here, what is this, July nineteenth, and we're sitting here in this, the last break, you know, we, first we had it down at the, uh, Killer Road. Then we had the one by the U-Haul, okay, which was, and then the big one. And I'll tell you, you know, I, I don't want to be sitting here three months from now, four months from now, without the plan approved, in place, and actionable, actionable items.
Agreed.
Take care of this problem.
Agreed.
Can we get Dan in?
Because you know, last time we had a, we had to shut down the sewer station. The nine satellite pump stations, the main, the main sewer station. We had to bring sewer trucks, twelve or fourteen sewer trucks. And they ran for what, five days? Five days, pumping every one of those sections out. If we didn't do that, people would have, we had a, we would have had a, we would have had to shut down the water, so they wouldn't flush the ton.
So, that's why the priority has really been to discuss with Swamp Scott and Lynn the bypass. Because, uh, one of the biggest costs, as you're saying, is the actual pumping and the trucking. And so, if we can avoid that, uh, we cut our losses, so to speak. But no, we completely understand Dennis's, uh, this is his priority, um, and we'll be back to talk about it at the next meeting.
Well, you know, talk is one thing. I want an action item, and a date sequence tied into the action item, so that I see a sequence of events that are going to happen with an end, end result.
Yep.
Okay, I don't want, because I come here and I get the hook, wink, and fake, okay? I, I don't want any more hook, wink, and fake. And I, I want just from the July nineteenth, start the date July nineteenth, and go forward by date sequence, your meetings with the, uh, all these individuals. Give us a plan, an actionable, workable plan that we can address this, and how much money it's going to cost us. Because it's going to affect the town.
Yep.
It's going to affect every one of the budgets in the town.
Right now, the projection is about two-point-four million, uh, but we're trying to make sure that those numbers are real numbers.
Again, again, you're giving me, you're giving me hook, wink, and fake. I want actual numbers. I don't want make-believe numbers.
Oh, yeah, exactly.
I want to see actual numbers from those engineers.
Yep, and that's what I just said, is we're, we're trying to make those numbers real.
Dan, we can have Dan come in at the next selectmen's meeting. Um, again, this...
Well, don't have him, I don't want to have him come in if he's not prepared.
No, he's prepared. Listen, Richie, that book was done. I, I don't understand, I can't, still can't to this day understand why we, why it wasn't done two years ago.
I don't know where, where that book...
But it doesn't matter.
That book showed up.
It doesn't matter now. It's, it's over and done with, and we need to move on, and we need to get it done.
Thank God you got Frank McGarrett working on it.
And, and, um...
I mean, they're working on it, and they're bright individuals, and they, and they, this book should have been given to us a year ago.
So, now we have it. Uh, we know, and, and Dan Cofflin has spelled out everything that needs to be done. As a matter of fact, Timmy Lowe has quoted it several times, saying that we had breaks on the Linway before. Uh, the force main was broken on, um, uh, Water Road, that's been replaced. So, we need to get it done. The water and sewer rates are going to go up. I mean, that's, that's the only place it could come out of. So, it wasn't something that I really was looking forward to, but it's, I'm sure it's going to have, it has to be done. So, the golf, the one on the golf course, that force main over there, I think will have to probably be done in the off-season, because you're talking about digging up the golf course. So...
We can't even dig, you know, we can't get it even, I can't, we can't even get Essex, uh, mosquito control to dig those ditches down there. They were supposed to be dug before the, uh, spring. March, April. Essex County mosquito control to dig all those ditches out.
Mm-hmm.
And now you've got a mosquito problem down there. Have you brought them over to spray all the mosquitoes down at the golf course?
Yeah, they've been doing their annual treatment already.
That's not the answer I want. When did they do the annual treatment?
I'll get the actual dates, because what they do is they do...
They haven't done, they haven't done zero down there at the golf course, and all those, uh, those, uh, the standing water. So, now you've got heavy rains, and you're going to have mosquitoes. And surrounding a recreational golf course and a recreational ball field. Little League's going to have the playoffs, the soccer's going to have, these kids are going to be eaten alive down there. Okay? And I just, again, you know, you're telling me, you know, oh, you're giving me the gobbledygook, and I, and I'm tired of the gobbledygook. I'll be honest with you. I want facts. I want data. I want you to call S S mosquito control and get them over here next week.
They, they have been over there. Let me give you the information, so that you have that.
I don't want information. I want actionable, I, I want, you know what I mean?
Action, action has occurred. Action has occurred. I'll get you the data.
Okay.
Okay. So, um, moving along, uh, we have a discussion regarding the possible reduction of speed limits. Um, it was, uh, something that was requested of this board, and the chief is here to talk about his recommendation or his findings right now.
Chief Dwyer.
You've been provided a, a summary.
Chief Dwyer, nice to see you. What time you showed up? You've been on an occasion for four weeks, right? Finally got away.
Yeah.
By the way, your troops did a, troops did a great job.
Thank you.
Fourth of July, uh, the tall boats, the long boats, sailboats, they didn't come in, but they were, you guys were standing by. They come in, you there.
The weather, the weather affected them.
Well, the weather affected, yeah, but it was, it was, they were ready.
Okay, chief. What do you think about the speed limits?
Well, I think most of the speed limits in town are, are reasonable. I think there's a lot of streets that are unmarked. Um, I kind of did a survey, went around to see what was marked and what was unmarked. I think a lot of our smaller street, Sherman Ave, Maple Ave, a lot of it's common sense.
Yeah.
Uh, however, um, those small side streets, I think we should, they're not clearly marked. None of them are marked, the smaller ones, a few here and there. Um, I think they should be down to fifteen miles an hour, because they're like driveways, Sherman, Maple, you know, some of the Bass Point streets, some of the, uh, Little Nahat. There's a lot of them throughout town. I think we should reduce those, those streets down to fifteen. Um, a lot of the other streets, uh, the main roads, the fastest one, we come in from, um, uh, stretches from, when we get off the Causeway inbound, from Wilson Road to Castle's Thirty-five. From, from there, it's, uh, thirty miles an hour, which I think might be a little too quick, going through that downtown area there, and, and then getting up towards, uh, the, um, Richland and Post Office, it's quite congested there. So, I think reducing the speed on the Hart Road to twenty-five miles an hour is, is acceptable. That will work on the Hart Road. Uh, most of the other, uh, Willow Road, I think, I, I didn't print one of those off myself. Um, I went through the, um, for Columbia, didn't really think we were going to get into all the... I thought we were going to have you guys review it, and then make a suggestion and get back to me, but, um, if you can see, a lot of these are already marked. Like, we use Castle Road, for example. If you, if you could take a right on the Castle Road, it's twenty miles an hour going up towards the school, which it should be. Coming back out, you're going to see a sign saying twenty-five outbound. Um, you know, just kind, as you come over the hill, past, uh, past Wonder Road, there's a sign saying twenty-five. I think twenty miles an hour is acceptable, uh, because of the school zone. Uh, Flash Road, because of the playground, it should be marked twenty, twenty miles an hour, which I believe there is a sign down there. For the most part, the town is, 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 uh, is, the speed limits are set pretty well. I just think it's poorly marked. Um, I don't expect, uh, the town to run around putting fifteen miles an hour signs like Will, uh, Sherman, Maple. I keep on referring to those, because they just come to the top of my head. They're so small down there, the streets are so restricted. But, uh, Bass Point Road, for example, uh, twenty miles an hour, I think is, is, is plenty fast enough.
Yeah.
And if you think you come up prime, there used to be a sign there saying twenty anyway, so... Um, it's just a matter, a lot of this is common sense. We can put all the signs we want up in the world, and people just have to adhere to them. And it's our job to enforce the speed limits in town. We do the best we can. Um, I think your average speed on the, on the Hart Road is probably thirty-five to forty miles an hour. People are comfortable. They get comfortable traveling up and down that road. It concerns me in front of Richdale, um, and the post office, it narrows down, people are walking. And we can put a sign there, twenty, we just hope everybody obeys it, you know? Um, like I said, speed, signs, common sense. You can put all the signs up in, in the world. It's just people have to, some will abide by them, some will ignore them. So, but, um, that's, that's my recommendation. If you, if you want to take, you know, a little bit of time and look, look it over, and see what you think, and we, we can discuss it further. I don't think it's anything immediate. Um, I think our motor vehicle accidents, uh, per year are low. Uh, I don't think the speed is, is causing any serious motor vehicle accidents. We do have them. But we don't have, um, off the top of my head, I think, uh, here we are in, um, August, we're almost a half year through, so I think we might have seven, um, accidents that we've actually booked in the town of Nahat. And that could be anywhere from the, uh, end of the Causeway all the way, anywhere in town.
Okay.
That's my recommendation, and I'd like you to take the time to look at it, and we can discuss it further.
I, I mean, I, I did look at it, and I think it's, it's, it's pretty good. I mean, I, I don't have a problem. And I think you're right about, if you mark it twenty-five to twenty on the Hart Road, they're still going to do four.
Thirty, forty, thirty, you know, it's common sense, and, and, and that's what you'd hope, the people would get down to these certain areas, and it'd start leaning on the brake, uh, you know, paying attention. We're dealing with a lot of other factors tonight too, you know? Um, we're dealing with texting and text driving and cell phones. There's a lot of other things that are, that are getting involved with speed limits as well, so... That's, that's what I, what I put down. I went over it with a few of the officers, and we talked about it. We looked around, and, you know, we, we drove around and made some adjustments, and we think a lot of these are in line already. It's just an update of what we have.
I think it's a good idea. It is a good idea. But while I got you here, I just wanted to let you know that, um, I'd like to see on a hot summer day, Saturday, Sunday, people are parking in front of the crosswalk on, um, as they enter the, uh, exit the, um, Lowlands.
In the back?
Well, they park there to draw people off at the beach.
Yeah.
Um, people have to understand, we can't have cutouts. Uh, first of all, they're expensive. Second of all, you're cutting into a coastal dune. You can't do it. It won't be permissible.
I, let me clarify this. Uh, are you talking down by the Coast Guard station that's pulling up there?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Anywhere, I've gone by there several times. Where Lowlands is, where the parking lot is.
Yeah.
You'll see sometimes, even Spring Road, at the end of Spring Road, they'll park right in front of the crosswalk, and you're just scared to death to go by, because you're afraid a little kid's going to run out behind that car.
We can address that. I can address that very easily.
The other thing is, I, it was me that called the police the other day. I was on the beach, and I was kind of amazed. I was walking around, um, right at the end of the ramp, there was a bar set up.
Yeah, two young children. We spoke with them. They live in town on Spring Road.
Oh, they do?
Yes. They're six and eight years old. We had a conversation with them, with the parents.
There was adults there?
That, those were the parents. They were just...
They had a bar?
Yeah, so, no, we'll, we'll, we'll end it at that.
All right.
We, we addressed it.
Okay, I know that.
This is...
But I, I thought they were from out of town. I think what they need to do...
No, they're not from out of town. They live in town, and, uh, we're familiar with them. They're nice people, and, uh, um, so we're going to leave it at that, and things like that that goes on at the beach, we can't babysit adults.
I know you can't.
I just want to clarify that. And we cannot be in a hundred-and-fifty locations in this town on a ninety-degree day. I put enough help on, but sometimes all it takes is one serious medical aid or an arrest, or some type of disturbance or domestic, and you can take two or three officers off the street for fifteen to twenty minutes to an hour, to an hour and a half. So, all I ask from the townspeople is, if you see something, say something. It's that, it's simple. You call us, we come down and address it. Uh, we try to get down there and do, and do the walking beat when we can, um, but there are times that we just, I don't have the people to do it. And, uh, if we do, we'd love to get down there, communicate with the residents, and, you know, we show a force down there, but we also don't want to over-police them. We want to make sure that they're down there, they're relaxing, and we're not, we're not over, you know, directing people what to do, when to do it all the time.
No, I, that's understandable.
So, I just want you to understand, we are, listen, I've been doing this for twenty-seven years.
And I, I see you guys, they were down there Fourth of July, and I was down there the other day, and that, that makes me very happy, because and I wanted to talk to Rob about this too. There was, I counted like, I think there was twenty-seven boats out there, and they're coming in beyond the buoys. They cannot do that. Um, and I understand they want to, but they, they just can't, because if there's kids out there swimming, and something happens, that's going to be a problem.
Yeah, and I think Rob's pretty good about addressing that.
Oh, he is.
But again, again, um, if the, if, if, if the people that are on the beach enjoying themselves think that's a violation, they're inside those buoys, we need to get a call, because Rob could be out there. He could have done his pass through, he hangs out there, he's constantly pulling them back. He may, he may have gone down to to the beach, or he may be up at East Point doing the same thing. So, if, if we see that, all we need is a simple phone call. We pick up the mic and say, you know, if the harbor master you're on the air, can you please get down to the sharp beach and push the boats back?
Yeah.
We need communication. Um, we can't see everything all the time. Um, I'll tell you, and I, and I'm, I'm not, you know, the, the officers give us, give me, give this town a hundred-and-fifty-five percent. I can't ask for a better crew. They, they do everything I ask them to do. Uh, they may not be happy about it, but they, they try to get it done. And you have to understand, um, I think on a Sunday or a Saturday, that phone does not stop. Things are constantly moving, and we're trying the best we can to keep up with it. It, it is what it is, and we're not complaining about it, but it's not as easy as people think, that we can dedicate services to, I don't have enough people. I just, we'd never have enough people. So, we're, we're giving it the, our best shot, and the officers are doing, I think, a fantastic job. I praise them every Monday. I'm over here on the weekends as well, taking a look and see what's going on. Um, and, uh, all I can tell you is, uh, we're doing the best we can, and, uh, we need the people to, to call if they see something wrong. I don't, I don't want to get it two, three days later. And Richie and I have had this conversation in the years past. He tells us, whatever, call them real time and let us address it. We'd be more than happy to get down there and address it.
All right.
Okay.
May I?
Mr. T, go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, you're doing a good job. I, I, I know at Forty Steps...
Is it okay if I talk?
Sure.
I'm sorry, I thought you, did you ask him?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't hear you. Yeah. Don't be afraid. Speak right up, T.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm, I'm sort of the other way of these two guys coming into Nahat. I mean, hundreds of times we come in. You reduce it to thirty-five, you're going along down by Coast Guard, you slow down anyway. To then have it drop, I, I, I'd like to see it stay the same. I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not in favor of dropping all that down to twenty-five or whatever all of a sudden, because you do slow down. You do. I, understood, understood. And it's nice to see the police there. That's number one. Number two, uh, great job down at the wharf.
Yep.
I was down there, um, from July first on, uh, quite a few times with the big signs. You got together with, uh, the harbor master, and you set up...
Yeah, Rob and I spoke, yeah.
That worked very well.
Yeah, it's, it's working, yeah.
It started with some, some talk
Sure.
that the Board of Selectmen were, were not closing the wharf, that some of the Board of Selectmen said that it was okay for them to swim off the wharf, which none of us did.
I didn't get that misinterpreted myself.
That, that's what I got hit with. And then, um, the fact you met with Robbie, when you go down and you see those big signs up there, and the police were down there, I was down there most of two days, and they were down there six or seven times. And keep throwing people off the wharf. I mean, getting them off the wharf. They were jumping in.
I, there's been some close calls down there. I think the kids aren't paying attention to what's, what's going on.
And it's not like, it's not like when we were younger, the liability is awful now, as you know. So, I mean, if they can be up, as upset as they want at me, I was going to bring up a motion that we'd close the wharf to Selectmen because of what I'm hearing in town, that some of the Selectmen said, "Oh, no, go ahead off. It's okay." None of us said that. But the people have to know that the police are coming down there. And, and the message is out. I've go by, there's no one on the wharf jumping off, because it's, the liability would kill us.
It's working.
And good job there.
I think it's just control and, and getting the message out and communicating.
That was very well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Um, yeah, and, and again, you are doing a good job down the wharf and...
Uh, my officers are doing a good job.
Yeah.
And the credit goes to them.
And they, they, even though they blame the Selectmen on it, um...
Yeah.
That's okay.
The officers are doing a good job.
I don't mind. Well, we, it was getting out a little out of control.
We take the heat anyways.
Okay, so, we got the speed limit thing down. We're going to, we're going to look at that, uh...
So, you want that to come back to the next meeting and take a vote?
Yeah.
Are you, are you going to, can I say something?
Sure. Oh, I'm sorry, Richie, go ahead.
Thank you.
Go right ahead.
Um, I forgot what I was going to say. I think you're doing a great job. I, I remember, I mean, years ago, we had problems up at Forty Steps. Finally, you've signed someone in that wharf too, because... Finally, you've signed someone in that wharf too because they're in Domingo. Uh, I think there's still in, in Domingo and down at Kelly Greens with the golfers, you know? And I think you gotta keep an eye on that, who's playing golf, who's not. Guys have pickup trucks, they put their clubs in the back and of course they disappear. You know, you, I mean, I'm not.
Right, no, I know. It's, it's another.
The wharf is a separate, separate issue. You know, you got twenty-five, thirty kids, it's controllable, usually the Nahat kids. It's the ones that come out of town, uh, and then they're starting destroying things down there and then you gotta call the ballgame.
We have it under control.
I think you do now.
So, I think we're, we're, we got a pretty good handle.
And, uh, you know, so, um.
Okay.
I, I think I've been walking the Coast Guard beach, uh, you know? That four-wheel vehicle you got, I think that's perfect. I mean, just drive that down there, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, I, your police officers, you know? People go to the beach and, you know, the parents and, and they're gonna have a beer. I mean, let's, let's be honest, this is.
I don't, we don't see it.
Well, this is America. This isn't Russia, but, you know?
That's why I said we don't, we don't, we don't.
We're not gonna demand.
Right, we don't want to over-police it. We're monitoring it and all we can ask is if the public's there and they see something, say something, call us.
Twenty-year-old kids with a, with a, you know, not football.
Twenty, twenty, twenty-one.
Twenty-one, whatever they are down there, you know, raising cane, I mean, then they gotta be talked to.
Sure, absolutely.
That's all.
That's why you.
The only thing I ask is if people come to the beach.
We got it.
They, they have enough respect for the town, such as we did growing up.
Things have changed, so you, you have to understand that.
I understand that.
In town, out of town.
And that's what I don't like to see and it has happened and I don't like it. And that's, so, that becomes a problem and when it becomes a problem, then you gotta stop them.
Yeah, we, yeah, exactly. So, I have the message.
All right, thanks.
Now, I, I like your, your speed limit recommendation. I, I, I do like it. I think people, even if you train them, they're still gonna, you know, there's still speed. People drive them. And I like your recommendation by the post office. That's a death trap. I mean, people come out, they're packing here, come out of the post office, especially the elderly and they go across that street and there's cars on either side, they've got a closed window and people are flying through there. You got Northeastern students going up there, just flying down, the trucks are going by there. I mean, I'm surprised someone hasn't been killed there.
Again, it goes back to, uh, we could put a sign every fifteen feet.
No, 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 I understand.
People, it's just people, they ignore it and they're gonna.
No, I know, I just, it's just, it's gonna be, it's very scary.
The other thing that we gotta do, Richie, is, um, uh, crosswalks. We're gonna try to put a crosswalk in at Little Nahat Road, um, going across the Doggy Beach. So, people from Little Nahat Road can get.
Before you do that, you've gotta, that, that is a very serious.
You've got, you've gotta have a study done.
I know that, I know that. But now, there's two other crosswalks on Spring Road that were already there that were covered up. Those have to go bad.
Yeah, well, they, yeah, yes.
Those are the ones that, so, Mitchell's Corner, there was two, two crosswalks there. But the other one on, in Little Nahat, there's people, I've, I've seen it trying to walk across the street and they can't because no one wants to stop for them.
Yeah, but the problem is they're coming inbound.
They're all coming over a ridge.
Over the hill. So, maybe we can put it down a little bit lower.
Well, that has to be looked at.
Talk about it, yeah, go talk.
That has to be looked at.
You need to study that one.
Somebody has to come in and, and put an X on it, say this is.
Okay.
You're just gonna keep it away from that hill.
We'll have to put it through.
They're gonna put, if you're gonna put a crosswreck and it needs to be at the edge of the playground fence.
Right.
So, people has visibility time to stop. You come over that hill and they're flying, they're gonna, you know, especially the dogs. Um, the other thing is the skite, the kite flies down there, you know, parking up on the curb and unloading, unloading, you know, you're gonna.
You're not supposed to park there.
No, we know, we move them, we move them.
Oh, I know, I saw your officer.
It's a constant battle.
We'll have to put in for funding for that one.
For.
For the crosswalk on.
Funny, we're gonna have to get a survey right first.
So, funny, so, I wanna move on to the, um, I wanna actually do the NAF one now because, um, they've been waiting a while and we can.
Well, I got one thing left here.
Wait, 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 he's gotta, let's. I've not done yet.
Wait, he's doing the bikes on farms, right?
Yeah. All I get surplus.
You're gonna do a surplus. I, I just don't want to go through the whole list.
No, you don't have to. Just, just look at it and approve it and.
I'll make the motion. All right. Teague's gonna make the motion for the.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to declare surplus, the attached bicycle list per a request from Chief Bob Dwyer.
Second. Okay, all those in, well, discussion?
No discussion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, okay.
Thank you, thank you, Bob.
Now, we'll go on to.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Know where you can find me.
Thank you, Chief.
So, the next item is an event request that has been put forward for a school fundraiser. And the issue that we need your waiver on is the, um, we have a prohibition for alcohol in the Bailey's Hill, uh, park. So, if you could waive that, then we'll continue to process the paperwork and have it back before you.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to waive the alcohol prohibition for the school PTO, NEF fundraiser at Bailey's Hill, eight twenty-six seventeen, from six to nine P M.
Second. Okay, um, discussion. Uh, I also want to waive the fee, uh, for the park. I don't want it to cost them anything.
Why don't we get rid of this first motion and then you can.
Okay, all right, um, well, I'll just, we're going through the discussion. Okay, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, that motion will carry, so they get their liquor permit for that night.
I move to waive the fee for that night.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. They do a great job, um, they work hard and all that money goes to the school, so.
As always.
It looks like a fun event and I, I'll be there.
Does look great.
My Latin shoes on. Yes. I, I mean, O one nine oh eight is, but isn't it part of?
It's more, it's, we're donating money to NEF and PTO, but O one nine oh eight is the organization actually hosting the event. But all the proceeds are going to NEF and PTO.
All right, we should amend that. Is the O one nine oh eight okay? Okay, that all right?
That, that's okay. You, you, the, the body of your votes count. I mean, they really do the jobs, so you're fine with, with those.
Um, it's a fundraising event, let me just read this, from six to ten P M. Uh, and it's, the theme of the event is Havana Nights. Uh, they're gonna be, they have catering done by the Mount Vernon and North Shore bartending will do the bartending. Uh, they have all their insurance in place, so that's not a problem. And, um, they've used them previously. Uh, they're gonna have a, they're hoping to have a Latin salsa band playing at the gazebo. They have plenty of electricity out there. Uh, and the tickets to the event are gonna be fifty dollars? Okay. Which I think is reasonable, um, and, um, I just think it's a, a great deal. And I'm definitely gonna be there.
You got a special, you got a special bartender coming in, Jack Casey? Ja- Jack Casey, the special bartender coming in?
Uh, we're using North Shore bartending service.
Yeah, well, they're gonna, they, they got a special.
Yeah, whatever you, whatever Richie wants.
Yes, yeah.
Is that, yeah, absolutely.
No, I'm just, you know, it's just, what do you say?
Yeah, so, the, the bartending service has submitted their, uh, liquor license, their insurance, liability, all that sort of stuff. The Mount Vernon has also provided their insurance information, I believe.
Have we approved their liquor license and all that?
We're still processing the paperwork, so we'll have that before you at the next meeting.
Okay.
But there shouldn't be any problem with it.
So, when's our next meeting?
Uh, you're, this is the end of August and so you're meeting the middle of August. So, you have plenty of ti- you have time to do it.
Why don't we, uh, we can schedule a meeting before that.
Why don't we just vote to approve it now?
Yeah, you can do that, subject, subject to, yeah.
And, and I would just point out that parking is at a premium there. We are trying to work with the school, the church and the council on aging to maybe have people park at satellite locations and bus them to and from so that we don't congest an already congested area. So, that's a, another piece that we're, we're working on to, uh, not upset the neighborhood on, on either side. And given that it's an August weekend, we, we also don't want to impact the Ocean View who has been very generous to, to O one nine oh eight as well. So, we're, we're trying to work with everybody to make sure that all the, all the, uh, impact is minimal at best.
Well, you can always use, you know, you don't forget the handicap.
Well, we're gonna save that for you.
No, no, move them back. You can park those cars up in that concrete away from the, away from the gazebo and you can park cars right along there, uh, for the handicap people. Okay, that the park, then I'd get some chairs out around so they can listen to the music. I think we'd approve that.
As long as they bought a truck.
Yeah, I would do that.
Yeah.
Authorization.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna vote tonight on, you wanna make that motion, Richie?
Yes.
Okay.
I move that the, um, the liquor license, uh, be approved under the office of the, what's the name of that?
North Shore Bartenders.
For that, for that event, the timing from six to.
I think you should add.
Six to ten?
Yep, and add subject to completion of all paperwork.
Yep. With the, with the, with the submission of all the necessary papers. I so move that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Police and fire also?
Police and fire also.
Just to prove it, I, I second that, Richie.
Well, this is part of that form anyway.
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, the motion carries.
So, you got everything approved now.
Okay, and the parking, as far as that is concerned, just come to us and we'll.
See the police chief, sit down with him, just say, listen, I don't know how many cars you get in there, but if I might be able to get at least fifteen, twenty handicap people, uh, let them park there and then they'll be giving a chair up in the cement there, their little, so they listen to the music. It might be, I don't know.
Yeah.
Don't forget the handicap, you know what I'm talking about? All right.
When can I purchase my ticket?
Tomorrow?
Good. Sure I'll get a phone call.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Next item is the quarterly financial report. We're running a little behind. I anticipate we'll have this, um, done within the next two to three weeks and then we'll report at the next meeting.
Sure.
Um, looking at trash collection. As you remember, at the last meeting, we had a discussion about, um, standardized trash collection and, uh, we had talked briefly about what I've got in your packet tonight, which is that the town has a grant and the grant is to study, uh, what it would cost to implement a standardized trash collection system. And so, we will be undertaking that study. You'll come back with the findings of that sometime in early fall.
Okay, but that's not the, those big giant barrels, right?
Well, it's a combination of the, um, the, the recycling trash and then a smaller version for, um, seniors and people who want a smaller version.
And then, we have to accommodate the seniors because they're the, they're the majority of the town, so.
I'm not in favor of this, even doing this. Get the grant because you're gonna, you know, waste management's no fool. They want to cut their labor costs, so they, they're gonna be picking up these barrels, uh, by the machine. And the seniors are gonna be suffering. And we don't have any room for these barrels, these huge barrels. That's what they're gonna, they're gonna, yeah, they're gonna probably cut it down to maybe, uh, instead of a hundred percent, fifty-five big giant ones, the one in Lynn, like the ones, you know? They're gonna cut them probably down to twenty percent, cut them down so this machine can get them and, you know, as they go by, the machine can pick them up. And that's what we do, I don't want. That's, I'm only saying. Because you've got a lot of seniors and, uh, there's no place to put these barrels. Little Nahat, Bass Point, you just don't have a place to put the barrels. And the seniors got a little bag and they put it out, or someone puts it out for them, little plastic bag, and it's, it's worked fine. You ask for this grant, they're gonna come back with huge money and say, oh, yeah, we're gonna give you this and do that. Next thing you know, we'll be switching, we'll, you know, switch. This is a, this is a game, which the grants coming? You know? I'm, I'm total, I don't, I don't even play, I don't even.
What, what's in the motion?
Yeah, I, I move, we don't even apply for the grant. Teague?
Do you? Any sec, do I have a second on it?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, um, I, I think, discussion. Um, I think Richie's right. I, I don't think the barrels that they're gonna supply us with, I think they're too big. We don't know if we're gonna have waste management, um, and I can tell you, I will tell you, uh, three strikes and they're out. I picked up trash, uh, last Friday and they absolutely went right by the person's house. I, and I witnessed it. Um, it was more than one house, it was a couple of houses. And I noticed that the, uh, town, the ex-town administrators' recycling wasn't picked up. Now, it was after three-thirty, so the DPW is gone and I'm not gonna call them. Now, it was after 3:30, so the DPW is gone, and I'm not gonna call them, I don't think, I think it's a bad thing to call, because, and I don't mind giving them the opportunity to collect overtime, but to have them pick up a cup, one barrel, and get six hours overtime is too costly for the town. So, again, getting back to this, I think that the barrel side, I think, I think it's a wa- I think it's a waste too, because some people, I mean, you got one, some of the elderly people put out, like you said, one bag. I know I don't put that much out, at all, at home, so... I'm against it, I just think it's not a good, not a good idea, not in the heart. Maybe other cities, you know, cities in towns, sure, but not here. Anybody else?
I'm just not in favor of that.
Okay.
This is setting you up.
All right, so the motion's there to not to...
Not to proceed.
Not to proceed. All those in favor of not proceeding?
Aye.
Aye. All those that wanna proceed?
Aye.
Well, the motion carries, so we're not gonna proceed with the grant, I guess.
Okay. Next item is, we have two signs that have been requested for no parking on Haunt Road, and I just need a vote on those. Those are across from Forty Steps Beach, and they, hey, there's a map that shows where they are, and if the motion, if you read the motion, it'll just identify and put it into the record.
Okay, well, the signs were already there, so this is just a...
Okay, that's fine, we don't have to... There are signs already up there.
Signs were already there, I don't understand why we even...
Yeah.
Well, I don't know that it was actually properly voted. This is just a clarification to make sure that the, it is, the vote is appropriate.
Ah, just, let's just keep moving, you have to go.
Okay. All right, flags flown, Richie, that was your item. I think that's, you talked about it earlier, about flags being displayed on the Fourth of July, as well as Memorial Day.
What does he, what does he say? I can't hear.
Flags.
Flags.
Oh, the flags?
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, we put the flags up for Memorial Day, and we buy these flags for the, and... They should be up for Fourth of July. I know we put them up one Fourth of July.
Oh, yeah.
As I was chairman of the Fourth of July Committee, and I had them put up. And we were shot about twenty, thirty flags, and we brought them. So, I just think the board should vote to make sure the American flags should be on the parade route, and you should buy the additional ones going to Little Nahat, so they can, they feel welcomed over there. They come to Little Nahat from the bank, for the parade route, and up for Fourth of July as well. I saw move that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, second. Second, for discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. So the flags will be put up?
Great, for both events, yes, that's fantastic. The next item is construction timeline warrant article. So as we talked about before, we currently don't have any restrictions when it comes to limitations on when construction can occur in town. So what we've done is we've taken some examples from other communities, and I've drafted up a warrant article for us to look at. This is really to show you that there are three elements in it. The first one is to restrict during the weekdays, construction between the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and then during the Saturday, from 8:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m., and then prohibit it from, for Sunday and holidays. So that would be the kind of, the body of this warrant article. And so I wanted to get your views on it, and if you were comfortable with those restrictions, then I'll move it forward to the planning board for their consideration.
I can't believe that we don't have this...
I know.
You know, and I was told that maybe the state building code would have it in it?
Well, it's a standard in most communities, and we've been telling everybody at the police department that these are restrictions, and so, so far, everybody's been complying, but it isn't actually written.
Yeah, I could've sworn it was, but if it's not, then we need to, we need to move on this.
So the question that I have of you is, is seven to six, eight to five, and then prohibition on holidays and Sundays, something you're comfortable with? And if so, then we'll move it forward.
Well, I'd like to, there are many days that I've been woken up by doors being slammed before 8:00 a.m. on Saturday. And a lot of them, there are a lot in the heart, people that start work before seven, because they're contractors, whatever, they work. It's gonna be hard to enforce, but I do agree we should start talking about this. I don't wanna make a decision on this tonight.
Well, I think the planning board should probably...
Well, whatever we send to the planning board. I think we're gonna run into problems if there are people out there, you know yourself, there are... I've had complaints from people who say that, you know, they're starting at 6:30, they're starting at quarter of seven, they're waking me up, you know.
Yeah, no, I think there should be restrictions, and there should be...
But maybe this is what we do need, to give them something for us to back us up.
We do have plenty of time.
That's what I'm...
This doesn't have to really start rolling until January.
Okay.
Richie, I think Monday, Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m., they usually start at seven, they knock off at three. That's what they usually do.
Right.
And then Saturday and Sunday, that hour, we're gonna have to discuss that one.
Yeah.
Because I don't believe that you start at 7:00 a.m. on Saturday or Sunday, and...
Well, it's gonna be prohibited on Sundays and holidays.
Sunday and holidays?
Yeah, and 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Saturday. Maybe we can go a little bit...
We need to discuss that, because what's a holiday, you know, it's a holiday, I mean, we gotta discuss it.
Yes, we do, Richie, I agree a hundred percent.
Some holidays, you know, you know, I mean...
They work, most holidays, they work, right?
Well, the majority of them, they do, because they don't, you know, Memorial Day, Fourth of July, they don't.
Right.
But the other ones...
Labor Day.
Yeah.
That's about it, right?
Labor Day, yeah. So let's discuss this, let's keep carrying on.
Keep it on...
Well, let me bring it back for further discussion, and I'll talk to each of you individually.
Yep.
Next item is the quarterly billing. You had asked us to take a look at what it would cost financially to go from three billings a year to four billings a year for water and sewer, and you see here that it's just under $2,000. And this is just the processing through our software program.
Let's discuss that.
Yeah, let's just see what it's gonna cost us to move to quarterly billing as opposed to...
Four times a year?
As opposed to three times a year. And I would look at also monthly.
Monthly?
See what it's gonna cost, maybe it might, just to keep the revenue coming in, and people, some people get shock treatments when they, when they get their water bill, it's like, oh, my God. They can't pay it.
It's so big.
Put all the bills together and see what we come up with.
Right. So we'll see what the best fit would be, you know, if we can go, that would be perfect, because it's like a utility bill, and some people would pay, if they're paying sixty or seventy bucks a month, or even fifty, some, you know, that's not bad, but when you get a bill for $700, and they can't pay it, there's the difference.
So Richie's point was the one I was gonna ask next, is are you interested in looking at other potential billings, such as taxes? Because right now, we...
And look at it, let's just, you know, think of the concern, who's getting billed? That's the way to think of it.
Right.
If you can, you know, they're getting, they're getting, you know, twice a year on the water and sewer, they might, you know, might be, be homeless to go to quarterly billing, and everything. So they, then it lists all the bills, and it might be easy.
Taxes.
Taxes, everything, they get, you know...
That'll keep the rans down.
Actually, it'll keep your cash flow, I'm gonna study, and it might give everyone a chance. Here's your sewer, water, taxes, you know, and you owe this for this quarter, and then they show the amount for each second quarter, third quarter, fourth quarter, and the total, total bill, so they could see it, you know.
I like that idea, so let me put something together, and I'll bring it back, and we could talk about that. Crosswalks, you had mentioned Enzo, the Little Nahant, and then the Mitchell's Corner. Are there any others you'd like us to look at?
Well, Mitchell's Corner, there was always two there.
Yep, and I could...
So those are there.
We can take care of those.
I don't believe you have to do a study in those. It's, some people have mentioned Little Nahat, so they can cross. And you'd have to, like Richie said, you're right, I mean, you couldn't put it at the end of Little Nahat Road, because the cars coming over the hill, they'd be in trouble. So it would have to be down towards the park, which would probably be a good idea, because there are kids that go down there still, you know, so we probably should look at that. And that wouldn't be a bad idea, because there is an area to go to Doggy Beach over there. And I don't know what the process is, you have more to do than I am, Richie.
Well, you got a crosswalk, and actually, there's three sidewalks that need to be... The one crosswalk is that, from Dunkin' Donuts, going from the parking lot...
Yep.
Across. And there's another one on the other side of the bank, right there, because they're coming up through the bank and crossing over in that area. And then the third one is where you suggested, down on the other side by the barfack. The problem is, when they come over the hill, they need, they need a site, you know, a couple hundred yards, thirty yards, to stop, and we've gotta slow them down...
Right.
To warn them, there's a crosswalk coming four hundred yards, you know, with the telephone poles and the barriers, so that when they come down into Nahat, or even going outbound, there's a crosswalk coming up.
Right.
And we gotta identify it, paint it, put a sign in the middle, because, I mean, I don't know how long the sign will last, but people come across that causeway going forty-five, and they just keep going.
Right.
Fifty, I mean, they're flying off that thing, and I just think, we gotta have it, we gotta have it looked at, and have the police chief look at it, because...
So there's a certain, that's a death trap.
That's a death trap for pedestrians.
Right.
Right there, if we put a crosswalk, and we gotta put it out at the end of the fence, you know what I mean?
It isn't time.
As you look at the, as you look at the playground, it's gotta be over here, and it's gotta be further down, but it...
Right.
You can't go too far, because you're in the sand dunes.
Right.
You know what I mean?
That's a tough spot.
And, and, because people, and the other thing, it's not Nahaters.
I know.
We gotta look at that and say, where are these people coming with their dogs? I had a complaint tonight, while I was at the tires. People are coming, parking over the parking lot, bringing their dogs over to this dog, they're bringing their pit bulls, and they're bringing, and they're not from Nahat, and they're letting dogs just run wild, and there's, there's dogs getting bitten down there, and there's a lot of excitement, and I'm not sure what we can do to control. We should think about that, call the dog officer and, and the police chief, because there's a lot of people taking their dogs on that beach. Now, the one way we can control it is, there's no leash law down there. They don't, they're not on leashes. We'd have to put all dogs on leashes to control it. And, you know, because these dogs are not, I hate to say it, they're not Nahat dogs. They're from Swambski, Marblehead, they're from Lynn, they're from Charles, because they love, they love the, a beach where dogs can roam free and chase each other. And the other point is, they're chasing people, the dogs are running up on the back of Castle Road, up in the decks.
Yep.
We keep getting that same complaint from those area residents that are next to the Doggy Beach.
Oh, we can put a leash law on it.
Well, that's what I think we should do, or we eliminate it completely, and let's stop the problem. I mean, this is, this is not a control, and it's not Nahat residents.
No, it, no, that's, that's pretty, and some of the dogs are good, I will admit.
Yeah, some are good, but...
And I guess there was an incident this weekend, there was a, someone got bit by a pit bull.
Yeah.
Down at Doggy Beach, or Short Beach?
Yeah.
These are the incidents not being reported, and they're not calling the police or whatever, but I would, you know...
So we need to get, we need to get control of that, you're right.
Before something major happens.
Let me talk with Scott Greaves. One of the benefits we have is he lives right there, obviously, so he's down there constantly, but let me see if he has some suggestions, these are all good.
Yeah.
Take a good look, take some, have him take some pictures. Now, today's what, March Thursday, Friday's Saturday and Sunday. And count the number of dogs on the beach, number of people on the beach, and have them stand at the end, find out where they're from. Maybe send a police officer with him, so they can ask for identification. Find out, get a majority of where these people are coming from. Because this Saturday and Sunday, you know, I mean, it's getting worse.
I understand there's also some commercial dog walkers that use the facility.
Well, I know that, who's what?
Commercial dog walkers, I understand there's been some of those down there as well.
As far as putting, I think anything we do down there, we have to take a vote on, though.
Correct.
As a board, even the board of health.
Exactly, so Scott Greaves would come back with a recommendation on various things we could try, and then we'd just vote on those, yeah.
Yeah, I don't wanna do it until we...
I'm not all against closing it.
No, oh, I know.
I'm not, Richie, because, you know...
Well, we opened up fairness, it was, you know...
But now it's out of control. They come from Salem, they come from Beverly, that's what I've heard.
Well, I've heard of it, at Dunkin' Donuts, I'm sitting out having a coffee, and the guy's got three or four dogs that are coming across.
Again.
And they're saying, they're just parked down in the parking lot, and they, and they come across, and they're telling, who are they telling, oh, the town needs to put more crosswalks in. And I'm saying, and guess where it was from? Salem.
Salem, yep.
It's, again, it's all about respect, respect for the town, and that's, that's the problem we're having down on Short Beach, and they have to have respect for...
There's no dogs on Short Beach.
No, no, I'm just saying, they have to have, you know, it all ties in together. People have to have respect for each other.
Yeah, they don't, you're right.
And, you know, I gotta tell you, I watched that bar set up down there, and it wasn't, it wasn't too little kids, it was adults, so...
Who was selling, looking?
I don't know what they were selling, I didn't go over there, I didn't wanna get involved, I just said, "Look, they need to come down here, we can't..." And they were actually selling it out on the street, and cars were stopping, and that's becoming an issue, people stopping on Nahat Road. So perhaps, I know years ago, we had, it was Jackie Tibbo, remember she used to cross people over there? Maybe we need to have a summer kid down there, you know, summer police officer type crosswalk person. It was, you know, just a small job. Move along, move along, you can't park here. We need to do something, because someone's gonna get clipped, and it's not gonna be pretty, so...
How about some of those sandwich boards as an attempt, because I know exactly where you're talking.
They don't care, they just, they stop, they let people out, there's kids sitting on that rope fence, and you have to tell them, and look, it's all about respect, and they need to, you know...
But they're not from Nahat either.
No, no, they're not. Those people, they weren't from Nahat, I can tell you that, but anyway, we need to move on. We got the crosswalks, now the technology committee is next, Jeff, right?
Yes.
Okay, so Kathy Kugis, she's Brendan Ward, Ken Corangelo, Debbie Waters, they've all, and Sheila downstairs in the assessment department, they've all graciously said that they would be on this committee, it's an ad hoc committee. I know Kathy and Debbie are very busy right now, and they really can't spend any time on it, so, and that's fine. I said, there's no pressure, but we need to look at the whole technology aspect, get things rolling, so it makes it easier for them, and more lucrative for the town. And I think that will work out, so those are the appointees, I would think, and it's an ad hoc committee, if everybody's comfortable with it.
Yeah, you've already taken a vote on that, so I think that you identified the real issue, is that right now, the treasurer collector and the town accountant are just, they're packed, they don't have any time.
Okay, now, there's one last thing I wanna add, okay, the closing announcements.
Well, I'm, I'm, old business.
Okay, old business.
May I?
Yes.
I covered the Fox Hill, Ward Road.
Yep.
The Town Administrator Act Committee that we put together.
Yep.
Would it be possible, as chairman, that you ask them to give us an update in September? Give them some time?
Yep.
Please.
I will call and ask.
September?
September would, yeah, because vacations, et cetera.
Right, okay.
Okay, everything else I covered, thank you.
Okay. Richie, old business?
On the, on the trash pickup, I wanna make sure that, since you're gonna, tomorrow's the first day of Thursday, make sure you do diligence. Send the public works around once they finish Little Nahat, and those other streets, Fox Hill, Castle, make sure that there's no trash in front of someone's house. That means they completely, they're gonna put it out on Friday. You're gonna have to send another truck around those areas on Friday, and I'd do that for the next couple of weeks.
Yeah. I was talking to waste management today about that, and they said exactly the same thing, and so I'm gonna meet with them throughout the day tomorrow, and then throughout the day Friday, just to see how it's going. And they understand that this could take a couple, three weeks before, but it gets into the process. We've sent out a code red, that we, that we sent out today, just to remind people, yeah.
I just wanna warn you, you know, the problem is, if people don't get that and say, "They didn't pick up my trash", they're gonna call the police station, one, two o'clock, three o'clock, Friday afternoon. The police are gonna call it, the public works got the two men to pick up the trash, and it's gonna be overtime. And you might, you might get two or three, and then another one's at seven o'clock, Friday night. Do you understand how that works?
Yeah, we've talked to the police about the fact, and any of our offices up here that get calls to say that if you don't have your trash picked up Thursday, leave it out for Friday, and we'll take a note of the properties that have had missed trash.
I, I tell you, I'm just, I'm just warning you now, you're gonna have a problem, okay? The problem, I can see the problem already happening, and it's, you know, the onus is on you to make sure we don't spend a thousand dollars cash on Sat- Friday night, Saturday morning, or Sunday, picking up trash.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more, if I may. The town administrator sent a letter to Federal Aviation Administration, Mass Board Authority, in other words, about the airport.
Yes.
The noise. Basically, to change the current initial fly-by waypoint for departures off runway 4R to a flyover waypoint. You, Little Nahat, please know that we haven't forgotten that. I sat Friday, having a cup of coffee, in forty-five minutes, seven flights went right over Little Nahat. And the first one was a huge jet, and I said, "I'm gonna count them, seven, right over Little Nahat." So we just have to keep up the pressure, and this is a good start.
Supposed to be no flies on.
No flies on.
So they need to have something else, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, we're just...
I have something else, Mr. Chairman, I forgot.
Okay, yes.
Jeff?
Yep?
Did you receive a letter from the firemen's union?
Not yet.
They said they sent you a letter, and was copying it in the board of selectmen, and I've never seen the letter. It was concerning the training on their ocean rescue.
No, when was it, did they say?
Well, I talked to them, what's today, today's Thursday, Wednesday. I talked to them yesterday or Monday.
I mean, let me talk to their...
They have Forty Steps, they have Forty Steps Monday?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was Monday.
Let me talk to their union rep, and just see if they've got a letter. I haven't seen it yet, so...
They wrote a letter to the board of selectmen, they copied it, and copied, sent it to you and to the chief. And, and it was copying to the board of selectmen.
Okay.
And I asked them, I've never seen that letter.
So we have it?
Did we, did you get that letter, or...
No, I haven't, so I'll, let me see if I can hunt it down, if it's in the system somewhere, or if they haven't sent it yet.
Why would, why would, okay, something's wrong, as, you know...
Let me see if I can...
I'll be honest with you, I was very upset that the training and firemen on the ocean rescue should have been split, one week for half, the other week for another half, so they have coverage. When I went down to the fire station, the chief's son was down there by himself. Did you know that?
Uh, when I went down there, there were two firemen there.
But the phone call was put out, someone called someone.
All I did was go down right after you called me, and there were two firemen down, and one of them was a call firefighter for Nahat.
When I went down, the chief's son was there. Well, and I don't know, did you, did you go down?
No, no, well, I drive by there all the time, but I gotta tell you, I mean, I think it's a, it's a great thing that they're training, but I would've split it up. Some of these guys wanted to have a vacation, it was kinda put on them, and then, you know, you're jeopardizing the town when you, when you don't have the regular guys there, so I think I would've done it a little bit differently.
And so Richie, I think the letter will address that, so let me, let me take a look at it, and just get a copy of it.
The other thing, we should do something, Josh, I mean, I don't wanna, you know, do it on the public, but, but we need, we need to address that.
Boston, yeah.
Boston, Boston, I think, Boston. He got the town, it's two, over two million dollars worth of thing. A simple thank you is fine, but we should do a little more for them.
Yeah.
I mean, in my thirty-five years in office, I've never seen anything like this.
It's amazing.
Plus all this equipment, I mean, he's on his own, he writes this all up. Yeah, what a, what an individual, you talk about dedication and initiative, wow.
Do you want me to, do you want me to inquire with some of my colleagues as to what they may have done?
Well, I'll have to thank someone.
I think the three of us should need, you know, we could take him to him and his wife out to dinner some night, or do that, I mean, I just, just something we need to, you know, gift certificate, you know, something, just a little thank you. I mean, I don't wanna give them a gold sticker, you know what I mean? I gotta change, we gotta change the color code, too.
How about a platinum?
All right.
There you go.
All right.
Any, oh, okay, new business? I do. I want to introduce an exploratory committee to the town, to designate Nahat as a green community.
Oh, good.
I think it's a great deal, the, of course, it's an exploratory committee, because not everybody knows, we don't know if it's a, if it's gonna be good for Nahat, but I think it's gonna be, to make the town green. It means adopting what they call this, and I'm not gonna get into it now, because it's getting late, but Uh, it... it means adopting what they call the... and I'm not gonna get into it now, because it's getting late, but the, uh, the stretch code, I think you are familiar with that, Jeff. The stretch code is a little bit more than the base code, uh, building code. But the base and the... the stretch code are kinda getting pretty close to each other anyway. There's a few other things. It's a lot of work. It's gonna be some work for us to do. The homeowner will have to come up with probably another seven, uh, fifteen hundred dollars. And it's only... it's only under new construction.
Mm-hmm.
Stretch code. Not... not re... you know, like reconstruction, or, uh, or, um, uh, you know, additions or anything like that. It's only for new construction. But the benefits of it, of being green, and... and the extra installation, the, uh, the, you know, the... All the things that they require certainly will benefit the homeowner, as far as utility bills. So, I already have a couple of people that are willing to serve on it. Diane Montieth, who was actually a close friend. I grew up with Diane, and she was actually a... She just retired from PSN H, and she had a very big job with them, and she... she knows the electric company stuff. And I have had several people, um, inquire about it, so...
I'll second your motion.
Okay. All those in favor of...
I think it's a great idea to investigate.
Yes, and then we'll... we'll put that committee together, uh, at the next meeting.
And... and people...
We can... we can populate it, um, I can actually populate it.
Interested people should get in touch with you.
Yeah.
You should find out, well, how many people you're gonna put on the committee.
Well, I think of... I think you're gonna have a bunch of people that might be...
Well, that's what I'm saying, but you should limit it.
I know Janet McCarthy was... wanted to let... mentioned it, uh...
No, you should... you should... number, don't put a lot.
No.
Yeah, and Emily Potts had done... had been on a similar committee earlier, Emily Potts. And, uh, she's got a whole bunch of information on this, because she's been talking to me about this.
Well, Emily and I are very good friends, so...
Yeah, yeah. And it's a... it's a great concept, because the grant money that's available through green communities is huge.
Right, it's... you're up... you're eligible, the initial grant, once you qualify. And by the way, I can get this guy, um, to come in. Uh, and actually, a friend of mine, Tony Barletta, who was... works for the D.O., uh, not the D.O.R., uh... D.C.I., or, uh, they change their names all the time, is the one that brought it up to me. And, um, I... I love the idea. And the guy that actually is the northeast coordinator is dying to come to Nahat. And he's actually Basil Robinson's, uh, son's Basil, his... his, uh, daughter's husband, so...
Really?
Yeah, he lives in Swambsk.
Wow.
So, he's gonna come to Nahat, and we'll have Tony, we'll have a big, big informational meeting, how we do this.
It's very family.
Right, so you'll be surprised how many people we can get to come to this and get it rolling, so...
Yeah, I've got an engineer who has been emailing me, and he wants to get on a, uh, to a committee for, um, uh, energy savings. And so, I'll forward that to you, and you can...
Is he a Nahat guy?
He's a Nahat guy, yep. So, I'll... I'll send him the information, give you the information, and he'd be a good guy as well, so I think it's a great idea.